I'd like to call the regular city council meeting to order. Joanna, would you call the roll please?
Mayor Downing.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Dodge.
Here.
Councilmember Snatzinger.
Here.
Councilmember Malika.
Here.
Councilmember Sowers.
Here.
Councilmember Joe Brown.
Here.
Councilmember Becky Brown.
Here.
Councilmember Whitman.
Here.
Councilmember Escobal.
Here.
Thank you. Would you stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the revalley for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
David, do we have any responses to citizen inquiries today?
Nothing to report tonight, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. All right. Are there any agenda additions or deletions tonight? None. Okay. So next, we have Carol Ann Walters that's going to be interviewing for the Planning Commission. Carol Ann, are you here? Come on up.
Hi. Guys, is that okay? Thank you. I apologize. I'm glad there's the podium here because I'm technically at work and I'm like, "Well, okay." We'll do it. Anyway, questions that you have?
Well, Carol Ann, can you tell us a little bit about yourself and why you decided to ask to be appointed to the Planning Commission?
Ah, yes. Well, first of all, I've been in Colorado about 35 years and I first worked as a paralegal at the county attorney's office in Boulder. And in Boulder, you live and die by the comp plan. You either understand it and go with it or do the research, what have you. So I became acquainted with the concept of comp plans and how they affect the particular, you know, political entity that they are derived from. So that's my understanding of that. I've lived in Northland about over 15 years now. How I got interested in Planning Commission after doing, I considered what I called soft volunteering and stuff. I was a flower bed partner and work on the canal cleanup, that sort of thing. But I was coming home from a bike ride one night and the lady who is running for the upcoming vacancy in Ward 4, we are standing in the driveway, me, her, her supporter, and we were just talking in general. She pops up and says, "Well, you have a lot of good ideas. Why aren't you running for office for something?" I'm like, "I hadn't really thought of it." She said, "Well, didn't you know there's a vacancy on the Planning Commission?" I'm like, "No, but I'll check it out." So at any rate, so I did. Yeah, went through the process of that, looked at it, and I thought, "Yeah, you know, I definitely have experience, you know, particularly working with groups, with groups who are trying to develop policy, discern, you know, what a particular audience might want, that sort of thing." So I thought, "Yeah, I think that's a reasonable match." So went ahead. Here I am in the second phase of getting onto the Planning Commission. I had the good fortune this weekend, I went to Planning Commission's, a sort of learning session that the state sponsors out in Golden. So I got to learn a lot. I got so much data. I mean, they provide so much. It's really interesting on statistics and demographics, that sort of thing. But I also got some very practical experience on, you know, what kind of things are you facing as far as what's appropriate, what's not appropriate, who do you have to take in consideration, et cetera. So it was very valuable. Whether I end up on the Planning Commission or not, it was afternoon, well, a whole day well spent. I appreciate that.
Well, I want to thank you for taking the initiative to attend some type of an orientation. You know, I really appreciate you doing that. So thank you for that.
Very worthwhile.
Yes. Any questions or comments? Yes, Carol.
So it sounds like you're kind of a planning nerd, Carol Ann. What do you do? What do you like to do besides planning issues? What do you do in your spare time? Because you're retired, is that correct?
Yes, yes. I am retired. Well, actually, the one thing I'd really like to do at my church, which is here in Northland, I somehow fell into being the person who manages the funeral luncheons and we have a lot of them. So I just like that organizational aspect. I have a great crew of women and actually, there's two guys that work with us, that sort of thing. And to be able to be there for people at a time when they need support instead of, you know, worrying about, "Oh, how do I do this? How do I do that?" You know, our crew comes in, makes it real easy for the family. And I just, I enjoy it. I mean, we have them as small as 25, we have them as big as 185, so, yeah.
Anyone else? Yes, Kim.
Hi, Carol Ann. Thank you for coming in tonight and being interested. I see that you completed the Citizen Academy and the Police Academy. Were those here in Northland or were those in a different location?
I'm sorry. One, you talked fast and two, your voice was kind of going down to the screen. If you could repeat that.
So I saw on your application that you had participated in the Citizen Academy and the Police Academy. Was that here in Northland or is that another location?
Yes, no, here.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Well, thank you for coming this evening and thanks for your interest.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we have public invited to be heard up to five minutes. No one has signed up, but I'll give you the opportunity. Is there anyone that would like to speak to council on anything besides the public hearings? Okay. No one's running up to the podium, so we will have presentations. Jenny, you want to come on up and the council will join you down there.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Thank you for putting up with me yet another month and we'll try to really move this along and honor all these families. I spoke to all the families today and many are in attendance tonight. Some couldn't be here, but we're sure going to honor everyone for their hard work for the month of August. The Neighborhood Beautification Program was established in 1998, so quite a while ago, and it was done to recognize residents that do a really great job on their yards. The city's divided into 13 areas and we have 13 volunteer judges that are out and about May through August in all of your neighborhoods, looking for all of your hard work. So in June, July, and August, we have winners that are chosen by the judges and as you all know that are here tonight, you get a large yard sign and then you attend a city council meeting if you can to receive your certificate and then a small keepsake yard sign also. So this month is the largest month, obviously, by the stacks. We have Yard of the Month Award winners in all areas. We have some Water Wise Yard of the Month Award winners, which is great because we are conserving water right now, for sure. And then in August, we honor the Long Term Home Beautiful Award winners and those are the homes that I think we kind of all strive to have a yard like theirs and maybe wonder what they're using to get that green grass and how they keep it so beautiful. And so this month, we're going to also add a Magnificent Tree winner. And in Northland, we were celebrating many years of Tree City USA and I meant to look out there, but I think it's 25, 6? Can't remember, something. Amanda's showing me. And we have some magnificent trees, some really huge, beautiful, magnificent trees. So we have one of those winners to award tonight also. So here we go. As I said, many couldn't be here tonight, but we're thankful that you guys could attend. And with that, we'll thank our judges and get started here. The first home is a Water Wise Yard to Robert Conrad Jr. at 420 Leonard Lane. And Leslie and Shirley Burrows couldn't be here tonight, but they live at 742 Muriel Drive. Connie Patterson, I don't believe she's here, but she lives at 880 Niver Avenue. And we have Patricia and Kevin O'Shea at 10858 Brewer Drive, another beautiful home, Water Wise. And a good friend of mine, Deb Hugner, who's a flower bed partner at 11639 Logan Street.
You're not going to just slide away? Do you want to say anything? She's not talking to us.
Oh, there you go.
Was this a Water Wise yard?
Yes. Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. Welcome. Thank you. Thank you, Deb. Okay, next.
Okay, we have Rob and Lynn Schur at 11864 Claude Court and they're here tonight.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Would you like to say?
Yeah, I'd like to say. You better be Water Wise in this city. That's the cost of the water.
All right. Anything else you would like to say?
That's the end.
That's why you have a Water Wise.
Yeah, it's a stretch down the path.
Looks gorgeous.
Thank you so much. Okay, we have Ed Crochet at 10721 Blue Jay Lane and this is a Yard of the Month Award. And Manuel and Maria Garone, they're not here this evening, but they live at 11344 Sherman Drive. Our next Yard of the Month winner is Viva Lee and Albert Padilla at 11541 Gilpin Street.
Thank you.
We've lived there, original owner moved in in December of '65 and we're on Gilpin Street, so one block over was Wyfford Drive. We're the school with, and that was the last thing, piece of us, all of them. It's changed.
Well, thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. That's so cute. Oh, it's with a good tree. Our backyard's prettier than our front yard. I'm going to have to stop by and see him.
Now you know why I love my job so much, right? And we have Miranda Brosch at 11062 Carlisle Street. Gerald and Maggie Hernandez at 10518 Ogden Street. Bert Valling at 209 Belford Drive.
I do need to say, you can take a little picture because you don't see the colors.
All right, we'll do that. Congratulations.
Do you help? Do you? What do you do?
I do water.
I do water.
Anyone else?
I do water.
So exciting. Thank you. Would you like to keep the sign?
Sure. Congratulations on the job.
Congratulations, sir.
Good job. Keep up the work. Good job.
And we have Samuel and Dorothy Melcher Schmick and they couldn't be here tonight. They have a beautiful home at 10835 Calumet Street. And Lori Williams at 512 West 114th Way. Oops, sorry. We have Joe Rivera, who is not here this evening, but 904 Mallie Drive, beautiful home again. And Derek and Mary Manus at 10639 Quivvus Street. They were unable to attend tonight. Aren't you amazed at these beautiful homes and yards? We have Sharon Mosier at 311 East 106th Avenue.
Congratulations. Thank you so much. Would you like to say?
Nothing.
Thank you, Sharon. It looks great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's beautiful.
It's so nice to meet you, Sharon. Thanks for being here. Okay, we have Peter and Lubav Pachinko. Good. 11106 Fillmore Way. They were not able to be here tonight, but a lovely home indeed. And now we're moving on to the Long Term Home Beautiful Award winners, Nancy and Jim Couture. And their entire family.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations, sir. Would you like to say anything?
Oh, I want to thank George, who's not here, but I want to thank George for driving around that day and seeing me out in the yard and working and everything. We've been there since '62. See, my folks bought the house actually in '62. So I've been here that long. I went to school at Maricopa and nobody knew where Maricopa was, but that's okay. You know, it was Thornton and it's still Thornton.
That's true. But you live in Northland and that's...
I live there. And the water is good water. The mineral supply is...
That's right.
Oh, sure, no problem.
Thank you.
Paula Walters at 82 Lindisylane.
Hi, Paula. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you for all the work. Would you like to say?
Well, I'm just a bit of my home, 44 years. I retired three years ago and love working my yard. That's what I do. I graduated from work in high school in 1970. So I've been here for, since '68, moved out here in '68, but I've been in my home for 44 years and I'm not moving anymore.
I'd like to hear that.
I'm glad to hear that. Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you.
Paula, it's beautiful.
Thank you. Thanks.
Whoops, sorry. Okay, William Brigade Jr. at 284 Muriel Drive.
Congratulations. Would you like to say anything?
I moved in to the new house in 1960. Never left.
That's great. Glad to be here. 1960, right?
Yeah. My father wanted to pay the original.
Oh, very nice.
Nice. Carolyn and Norman Forbes at 11487 Humboldt Street. And that's another home that they drug me to their backyard and you cannot believe their backyard. It's really something. Joe and Lily Montoya at 11936 Lafayette Street. Somebody write the...
We need to blow this one up. Where are who's the neighbors at? I went to my random high school, graduated '86. It's my wife's room. But we brought our family up here, later schools, of course, because I went to school in District 10 schools in District 12. These are the same schools, too.
Five-star.
And they're doing a lot better in school, education-wise, and we love the neighborhood. It's quiet.
Keep up the good work. And who does all the work?
We all do. We all...
Do you help?
Do you really?
All right. I believe you. Congratulations.
But my mom's upstairs in Cleveland.
It's Lou. Okay. All right.
We'll have it corrected.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you. It looks great. Hello.
Sorry about your name. Good job tomorrow.
Good job.
Okay, got it.
Job. So Jenny, do you take back and then we'll get George? Get another one?
I'll make you the certificate.
All right.
We'll get your mom's name on your receipt. Thank you.
Thanks for telling us.
Carl and Sherry Dinkle at 2006 East 113th Place. Gracila and Jesus Laura at 11785 Eladi Court, beautiful home. Brian and Crystal Lehman were not able to be here this evening. I talked to them today. They're so grateful for the award and they live at 10629 Verriese Lane. Brigitte and Bill Jackson at 10240 Melody Drive.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Congratulations. Oh, you have to be having the entire family.
Hi.
Hi. Would you like to... Everybody helps. So what are your jobs?
I'm a support worker.
I get to do that, too.
These are the small ones.
The girls still won't put it on. Do they really? It builds muscles. Beautiful. Beautiful yard. Well, thank you for coming. You're kind of quiet. What have you?
I also support weeds and...
Ah, very good, very good. Thank you so much for coming.
Thanks.
Pretty good. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Everywhere.
Thank you, girls. Thanks for sharing your words with me. That was cool. Thank you. So I just have to tell you, the day that I stopped by there to take the picture, Brigitte said, "Do you hear the birds?" And I'm thinking, "Yeah, I hear the birds." There, you know, it was a beautiful day. And she said, "No, across the street and Melody is four lanes wide." And so I thought, "Okay, yeah." And so from the west side of the street, over just right over the top of my shoulder, this bird flew and just landed on her hand and they had been raising some baby sparrows whose mom got killed and so she was able to just feed them from her hand. So you just never know. Yeah. Oh, did you? Yeah, so just, it's pretty amazing. I didn't ever have that happen.
They actually came back even to him and when it's already cold and windy. So we had him for another two and a half weeks.
Wow.
We even took them camping.
Yeah, so you just never know what you're going to run into. So I'm listening for the birds from now on, for sure.
That's a first for us.
Yeah, exactly. And last, but certainly not least, is a good friend of ours and a football coach. I feel like I should call him Coach Jim. Jim and Brenda Kahler, they live at 1075 Clare Lane.
I want to thank Jenny and all you guys do. I think it helps the whole city when the people see the signs they want to do. Go out and there you are, it makes it a lot a little better. So I think it's a great program for those.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it. Picture's very relaxing. I'm fucking myself to the max.
Thanks, Jim. Beautiful yard. It's gorgeous. And right next door to Jim, I think is a real testament to that because the house to the east of him has tore out their entire yard and is redoing it. I do think it really does make a difference, so just so you know. All right, so now we're going to announce our Magnificent Tree winner, which is on social media and in the connection. This is a beautiful American linden tree and city staff has told me that it's one of the largest lindens they've ever seen because they're typically not that big. So Jim Adam is the owner and he lives at 10968 Patterson Court. And again, another beautiful yard with that beautiful tree. So come on up, Jim.
How did you get this to grow like that? You can't go anywhere. And then we also have this and Jenny and I talked about it and we thought maybe you could wear it. And Jenny and I talked about it without maybe you could wear it. All right. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Congratulations. Beautiful tree.
Jim, good to see you. Good to see you. Jim's, Jim's family also receives a credit on their water bill. So that's a good incentive to grow magnificent trees in Northland. So thank you for a great summer and keep up the good work on your yards.
There you go. Well, just wait a moment if I can tell if anyone's going to stay.
What?
They don't like it. Seriously? You are frozen? I just have to have it.
It's just a moment.
Yeah, I know. Everyone always leaves after we give them awards. You know, they just don't want to hang around or.
I know.
Okay. All right, next we have the Adams County Youth Initiative. Becky, you are right here. Come on up.
I don't have an award for you right now. Sir?
I don't have an award for you right now.
Oh, no, there's one. Well, good evening, Mayor Downing and City Council members. My name is Becky Hoffman. I have the honor of working at the Adams County Youth Initiative on behalf of our partnership. And I really stopped by tonight to formally thank the city for your ongoing participation and support in our countywide effort to support kids. For those new faces, just to provide a quick introduction to our role and the work that we do and for the folks that have been around the table for a long time, I recognize a lot of you, just to give you a quick update on some of the work that we're doing here locally with some of your young citizens. And I have a personal shout-out at the end, but I, I think I have five minutes. Is that right?
You can speak as long as you want.
Okay. If I get, if I'm talking too fast, I get passed. Just slow me down.
There you go.
So really, the Adams County Youth Initiative was founded on the principle, for those who care about kids and are decision-makers on behalf of kids, is that we really are better together than working alone. We were founded back in two thousand and five and we incorporated as a non-for-profit back in two thousand and twelve with some of your former colleagues signing a resolution with the other cities, school districts, and county government to incorporate this role that we have. So we didn't make it up, is all I wanted to say. Currently, we're a network of about seventy-five organizations that work to ensure our young people excel from cradle to career regardless of race, income, or zip code. So I provided the updated collateral for you to take away for some nighttime reading. But really, our job is to hold a vision of all kids' cradle to career in our community regardless of where they live in the partnership. With really the end goal of is that we have an educated workforce for jobs in our community. Specifically, we have been the data people on behalf of the partnership over the years. We are responsible for the Adams County Student Survey. So that's student perception data, sixth through twelfth graders. And new, over the last couple of years, we've added third through fifth graders as well. So we really see that as the first starting point of hearing what our young people have to say about our community. So I encourage you to visit our website, acyi.org, and you can see some of the data that's happening across the organization. But I think behind every piece of data is really the story of the kids in our community. And so there's two examples of that specifically in Northland that I want to share with you tonight. We have been supporting a program at Northland High School called Come to School Program. And this is really interesting. We've been able to work with the high school, the Adams Twelve Intervention Department, and your Seventeenth Judicial Court system to go in and look at attendance and truancy rates of ninth through twelfth graders. And through looking at the data, we were able to see that kids in Northland were truant or chronically absent about twelve percent of the time. So if you think about the number of kids at Northland, that's actually a lot of kids. And the state average is around ten percent. So the administration at Northland was really trying to dig into, well, who are those kids that are chronically absent and how can we better support them? And that was really the spirit of the work. And so for the last two years, they really zeroed in on the ninth grade and tenth graders. And they basically put together a cohort of anywhere between seventy-nine to about a hundred and twenty-four kids to really zero in and talk to them, students individually, of what are the root causes of why you're not coming to school? Bringing the family in to have a conversation about what's getting in your way from coming to school regularly before, it's really a prevention program before they would go to truancy court. But the outcomes are literally outstanding. Just this last spring, there was a hundred and twenty-four students that were identified to be chronically absent. And by the end of the program, they had zero kids referred to truancy court. So as that impacts the city of Northland, we know that when kids enter the juvenile justice system, sometimes it's through something as silly as truancy. And if we're having conversations with kids about why that, they're not going. So I just wanted to share that this program in your city is actually becoming a partnership-wide model and we're really looking to scale it up. So really excited about that work. As we think about the career end of our continuum, we are actually working with the Adams County Education Consortium. And tomorrow morning, in fact, we're diving into the data about where kids enroll in post-secondary enrollment opportunities in the partnership and where they complete those institutes. And so we're really making sure they're on track to graduate. I wanted to share that for kids at Northland High School in particular, we were able to zero in on the fact that twenty percent of kids go to Front Range Community College. They stay here in Adams County those two years after they finish, or they go to Metro State. So through that data, we've been able to bring those two college campuses back into the partnership to really zero in and how are we bridging kids the day after high school graduation rates? So for those of you who've been around the partnership for a very long time, it started again with keeping kids in school and not the justice system. And we really stopped at high school graduation rates. And now the partnership is really driving us to think about the day after high school. So those are the two projects I wanted to mention. We're also really looking forward to aligning with your youth commission. We were fortunate enough to score a summer intern. She was a Daniel Scholar, recent DU graduate, and she's been working to really map where our youth councils are to really take that youth engagement piece to the next level. So just wanted to say, watch the space because we're really committed to making sure kids are part of decision-making as well. Before I go on, does anyone have any questions for me or ACYI?
I do have a question. And I don't know if you can share this information or not, but what type of data or what did you find that caused kids not to attend school? You know, what was the, what the reason for truancy?
I don't have the data in front of me, but I did look at it right before I came. Things, just life happens, right? Like kids, a lot of kids are dealing with, but transportation ended up being a really big barrier.
Really?
So getting kids to and from school and if there's, if they were in close to walking distance, but zeroing in on how do we, a precious child is a really good friend of the partnership and they've been able to provide bus passes and Adams Twelve bus passes and it was just as simple as that.
Interesting.
There was some social, emotional, you know, teenage drama happening. And so they brought in an intervention during the lunchtime because what they were finding is that kids were possibly coming to school and then leaving for open campus and not coming back. So how do we keep them there?
Right.
Right? Those type of things. But really, it was a case-by-case situation and it was allowing the school to really zero in on the right resource for the right kid at the right time. And then through ACYI's process, we were able to help them look at data in real time. A lot of times in the education sector, as we get that one big population, high school graduation rates or chronic absentee rates, and by then it's too late. So this has really been a great prevention program that we're really excited about.
Sounds great. Anyone else have a question? No? All right, go ahead.
Awesome. Well, I mean, I really, that's all I had tonight. I just really wanted to stop by and formally thank you for your ongoing support and participation. And please visit our website and join our newsletters and there's really exciting things coming up. And that's all I have?
Kyle.
Becky, thank you so much for coming tonight. And it's really exciting here about this intern that you have to engage some of our youth commissions. The question I have is, we just had a large turnover on our youth commission. A lot of the, the members graduated and aged out of the program. Would that intern, working with your organization, potentially have ideas or students that they're working with that might be good fits for that?
Her name is Ashley Eggersen and she's so awesome that we've been able to find resources to keep her on until the end of the year. So just call me or I can reach out. We would love to zero. But that's actually the next phase. We're meeting this Wednesday afternoon to really flush out. We didn't want to start a new youth commission. You already have a great structure for that. City of Westminster, Mapleton Public Schools have a youth commission. And we're, our idea is like, how do we help build capacity for your young people to be able to inform your voice and then do that collectively? And so yes, absolutely, that's exactly what that action plan's looking like.
Perfect. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much for coming. Just want to pay mercy.
Becky, I just wanted to say, thanks for bringing a real-world example as to how it's impacting Northland. I think sometimes when we have these programs, we don't get to hear about the impact directly here in Northland. So I appreciate you bringing that.
No problem. Anyone else? All right. Thank you again.
The last thing I just want to say is a personal shout-out to your recreation division. I was really struggling for a day camp this summer. So my six and eight-year-old were in the camp this summer and they had just a wonderful experience. And your staff are rock solid. So thank you for that. And I will give that one last pitch is our founder, now Judge Don Quick, is back on the scene and he has a real passion for out-of-school time, if you've ever heard him talk. And so we're really looking at mapping after-school and summer program access for at-risk kids and really figuring out how we can bring that to light. So I just wanted to give a personal example is that I really hope every kid in Adams County got what my kids got this summer from your program. So have a great night.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you. All right, next we have economic development update, Debbie.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. We've got a full program, so I'll try to skim through the full report. Well, thank you very much for all coming to the groundbreaking on August 24th for the Huron Center. It was great. A little bit more than windy, but we got through it. So as you know, it's, there's a lot of dirt moving and a lot of pipe being put in and that's going to be a great successful program. A couple other projects to talk about is KFC is going to be demoing their forty-nine-year-old existing building on One Hundred and Seventh and Washington and constructing at the same location, a new and modern-designed building. So that is great that we were able to keep them here, retain them here, and they hope to open up in the spring. Also, you prob, oh, yes.
Sorry, Debbie, just with that, real quick, not to interrupt. Are they looking at redoing the, the drive-through? Are they relocating that at all?
Apparently some redesign was done. David, we're planning, Brooke, does, or Eric, do you want to come up and talk about how the redesign was done?
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Yes, they are actually combining the two, right now there's two driveline, drive access points to the property. So those will be combined into one. So it'll be a little bit wider to help with the flow on that particular site because it is a little bit awkward when you're getting in and out of there. So it's a complete scrape of the site. They're actually going to demo everything and rebuild parking and everything from scratch. So.
So will the drive-through still be adjacent to the house as those?
It will, yes. And their responsibility, according to the zoning ordinance, is to provide a screen fence buffer. So that's a note on the site plan as well that they have to maintain that in, in good repair.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Appreciate that. You also probably noticed on One Hundred and Fourth where the former Belco was, that the building is now gone. It has been demoed and Wadsworth, Brooke is going to be, Wadsworth Development will be building the new Starbucks there. We're in full gear for the two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen-six annual business appreciation breakfast. It'll be held at the Romana on October 27th. The theme is Discover Northland. And as you know, that's our new tagline. But we're also developing a video that we'll be using for promotional purposes that is called Discover Northland. And I think you'll be really impressed when you see that done. It'll be used for marketing and it's, and it's combined not only doing business in Northland, but also quality of life and workforce and education. So I think it'll be a good promotional video that will be able to use in all assets of the city of Northland. We had our nominating, committing meet last week and we did select the winners. There will be ten awards that will be given this year. And we have an incredible keynote speaker, Tamara Kleinberg, and she's going to be talking about discover your innovation advantage. She's got a great background on helping businesses, both small and entrepreneurial. And I think it'll really zone in on our small businesses. And don't forget to vote for your favorite business at, it closes at 5:00 PM on September 9th and that's northland.org/businessvote. So if you haven't voted, please do. We've got hundreds and hundreds of votes in right now. It's, it's really caught on. Also wanted to tell you that there's a great article, I'd encourage you to read it in my report, which is Adams County ranked eighth in the nation for economic development for the next five years, which is really encouraging for Northland as well as all of our adjacent cities. On page three of the report, we've got a new format reflecting closed businesses and net totals that has been requested and that will be going forward. So you will see that we have twenty-seven businesses that we've reported, twenty-two net. So there were five closures. Those are in Attachment A, so you can see the closed businesses each month. A hundred and ninety-eight net new jobs and eighty-three thousand four hundred and seven net new square footage absorption. Also, just as a note, three new businesses are in the report, but I'd like to note that Kid to Kid over on One Hundred and Sixth and Melody had a great grand opening and ribbon-cutting event. It was standing room only and it was terrific. But that is an eight thousand square foot building or space over there that has been empty since the dollar store. So over ten years, that's been sitting there empty. So that's a great asset for our community to get that filled. It's a, it's a strange and long space, so it just hasn't been conducive for a lot of businesses. Also, you probably saw on Facebook and, and social media that there's a new Bronco Locker Store that is opened. That's over in, in the Safeway Shopping Center next to Papa Murphy's. That will be a permanent location. This is one of three locations, one in Centennial where their training facility is, one at the stadium, and one in Northland. So we're really pleased to have them there. We will be having a ribbon-cutting in the future for them. Special thank you and recognition to the twenty-three businesses that celebrated anniversaries in quarter three. Again, congratulations to them. And just another note, with the Small Business Development Center, we work really, really closely with them and partner with them on assisting our businesses. There's a lot of services that they provide that we can't provide. And they just finished their two thousand sixteen report for the zip codes of eight oh two three four and eight oh two three three. And the Small Business Development Center helped eighty businesses in Northland, two hundred and seventy-seven consulting sessions, and two hundred and thirty-seven hours of consulting time. Now, with that said, Northland, those two zip codes do fall in another city, so they might, there may be some others of potentially Westminster in there, but because they don't, they don't break it out by city, they only break it out by zip code. But I think that's a good indication of how much our Northland businesses are using them. So with that, does anybody have any questions?
Questions? Carol?
Not a question, but I want to give an extra shout-out to Cakes by Karen for forty years in Northland. Whenever I go in there, they treat me like I'm the most important customer ever. They deliver. Their customer service is wonderful and obviously their cakes are wonderful. They've created so many different creations for me over the years for my kids. So I really love them. They're a great Northland business. And I did want to thank you for explaining what Discover Northland was because I had seen that tagline in an email and was like, what, what is that? I don't know what that means. Now I know what it means. So thank you.
Okay. Kyle?
Again, it's not a comment, Mayor. I just want to, you know, emphasize how busy that Kid to Kid is. And the proximity to my house is very dangerous and especially having my daughter and my wife that love to shop and they frequent it quite often. And so it's, it's, it's nice to have it in the community, not how nice it is for our bank account.
Again, it's not a comment, Mayor. I just want to, you know, emphasize how busy that Kid2Kid is. And the proximity to my house is very dangerous, and especially having my daughter and my wife that love to shop, and they frequent it quite often. And so, it's, it's nice to have it in the community, not how nice it is for our bank account.
And that is a franchise, and she is an, she's an entrepreneur herself, and she decided to do this because she's got kids, and it's a great success story.
It's a great story.
Anyone else? All right. Thank you so much, Debbie.
Thank you.
Next is the consent agenda.
Move it for a second.
Please open the vote. The vote is open.
I'll close that vote, and the consent agenda passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next is public hearings, the first one is CB 1894.
A bill for an ordinance repealing and reenacting Article 3 to Chapter 10 of the Northland Municipal Code to adopt by reference the 2017 National Electrical Code with amendments.
Move to.
Okay. David?
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Tonight, you'll be considering adopting the 2017 National Electric Code. In order to be in compliance with state statute, the city must be following the most current edition of the National Electric Code. 2017 is the latest version, and staff recommends that city council adopt the 2017 National Electrical Code.
Thank you. I will now open the public hearing on CB 1894. Is there anyone here that would like to speak either for or against CB 1894? Is there anyone here that would like to speak either for or against CB 1894? Okay. Seeing no one approach, we'll close that public hearing and move to the second one, which is 1895.
A bill for a special ordinance rezoning from C4 conditional commercial to planned unit development, certain real property in the city of Northland located at 10701 Washington Street in the county of Adams, state of Colorado, and amending the zoning map of the city of Northland.
Deidre?
Mayor, council, you know, this is the Starbucks location that's moved from 104th, rezoning, classification to a PUD. And Mrs. Saboda's here to answer any specific questions on this ordinance zoning change.
I will open the public hearing on CB 1895, for the public hearing on the application for the rezoning of the property located at 10701 Washington Street, from C-4 conditional commercial to planned unit development. The Northland City Council has jurisdiction to conduct this hearing under the applicable provisions of its Home Rule Charter and Charter, Chapters 3 and 11 of the Northland Municipal Code. The procedure to be followed, in this case, will be as follows. City staff will give a brief outline of the nature of the application. The applicant may then present any evidence in support of the application. All persons opposed to the application shall then be entitled to present evidence. Any other interested parties shall be entitled to present public comment or evidence. The applicant may then present any rebuttal evidence. Council members may ask questions of staff, the applicant, and the public who testified. All witnesses will be placed under the oath by the city clerk and may be cross-examined by any party, council for any party, or the members of city council. Are there any objections to the jurisdiction of the city council, or to the form or substance of these proceedings? Hearing done. Brooke?
Good evening, Mayor and council. I just want to point out that the applicant is here tonight, and also has brought some of their engineers, so if there's some questions that I'm not aptly answering, I will defer to them, but I will do my best to endeavor to address your concerns as we go through the presentation, as well as any, at any time, please feel free to jump in and ask a question. So, here, we're here to consider the PUD, a rezoned PUD for the Starbucks at Garland. The applicant is seeking approval. This is the, as, as David stated earlier, this is, this, this building and facility is currently located at 104th and Banock, and moving it over to this Garland pad site. So, currently, the site is undeveloped. It's about 15, or almost 16,000 square feet, about, just a little bit bigger than a third of an acre, northwest corner of Washington Street. The address is 10701 Washington Street. Access from Washington will re, is to remain, but no curb cut for Garland. The access for Garland will be the first driveline access through the Walmart grocery store, which I'll cover in a little bit more detail when we get to the site plan rendering. Also, the proposed building location of the existing container store that is currently located at 104th and Banock Street. Okay? So, here's an area map. The red star annotates where the actual proposed site is. Walmart to the, to the upper-left, the church to the south, and then, to the east, you have a residential. And also, Quanis Park is right over there as well, on the south side. Here's a picture of the site. Many of you may remember this as being a corner gas station at one point. So, this is the surrounding zoning that we have. It's commercial to the north and northeast, and then residential to the east and southeast, and then, we also have the church and the park to the south. This is the information regarding the public notification and the process that we adhere to for the planning commission. Just want to duly note that notices were sent to the surrounding 35 properties, and it was published in the Northland Sentinel, as well as assignments posted on the property. We have that information on the slide as well, to annotate that those actions were actually done. Okay. So, the site is currently zoned C4 conditional commercial. The applicant is proposing a rezoned PUD to allow some flexibility for the encroachment of a driveway on the south side of the property. The site has two frontages, and what that typically means of a right-of-way is that you apply two front setbacks to that, which are both, which happens to be 25 feet, which is what creates part of the uniqueness of the site itself. Essentially, what, what this PUD would be granting is a deviation from 25 feet to 14.8 feet to allow for the driveline, which I'll point out here in a moment, just so you guys can see exactly what we're talking about. Okay. Parking requirements, they are providing a total of five, however, they're only required for two. As you may, as you may recall from the previous PUD we did a couple years ago, this is a very tiny facility, and typically only has a few people working on it at any given time. With that being said, the elevations is the same elevations that we previously seen. We've got pictures of those, and they're all from recycled materials. This is, this was Starbucks' first pilot project for a container adaptation for, for commercial use that they've done. So, they're reusing it at this new location. All right. Landscaping, they're providing almost 30% landscaping, they're only required to provide 12%. They're putting in five new shade trees and five ornamentals. The one existing tree that's there now will remain, which is a rather large tree, which from the previous photo you can see is, it's, it's big. So, also, in total, they'll be adding 10 additional trees with the property. The drainage, Public Works has reviewed the drainage and the traffic. I will show a few slides here that will kind of speak to that. As I said, one of the things is, is that one of the accesses that's going to be utilized here is through the Walmart parking lot. They have entered into a cross-access easement agreement, where not only will they be providing access to and from the property for, for, for traffic, but also allow the ability to use it for overflow parking if that, if they need ever were to. So, here's a copy of the site plan. I'm going to pull out my laser pointer that I know I can make work, because I always struggle with those ones. So, forgive me. So, the driveline that we're talking about is this driveline right here. This is Garland, Washington Street. And so, the accommodation of this PUD is primarily to address the, the requirements to not put any interior improvements within the setback of the property. So, that's really what we're, we're considering tonight. Otherwise, this would have been just a straight final development plan project. The other thing I'll also point out is that this right here is the drivelines for the parking lot into Walmart. The access is about right over here off the, off the image here. It's approximately 250 feet from the intersection where the access comes in. This access here to the north is approximately 100 feet north of the intersection as well. Okay. This actually is showing the queuing analysis for the vehicles as they would, as they would go into the traffic queue for, for the, for the site. One of the things that I know was brought up a lot in the last conversation we had with the previous PUD for Starbucks was, you know, backqueuing into the roadway and what those concerns were. I will point out that the, the traffic volume for this particular site is about 40% less than what it was identified in the previous project. And, and that's by and large because these types of uses are pulling traffic off the existing network, and because Garland does not have the same number of ADTs as Melody does, same is true for 104th as it is to Washington. There's just not as much traffic volume that those two streets generate, and so therefore, their, their trip generation or their actual impact to the network is much, is much less in that regard. That being said, we've, we've, we've worked through with engineering and also through the applicable standards that we do for a regular traffic analysis to fully vet and understand what the potential impact is. And as we discussed in the previous public hearing, if we encounter problems, we have the ability to go back out there and reevaluate and modify access control if we need to. So, I just want to also make sure that that's part of the, part of the information provided tonight, is that, that even though if we do something here and we see that there's more, there's more than what we anticipated, we have an ability to go in and, and regulate after the approval. Okay. The landscaping, as I said, this is a very generous landscaping plan, very elaborate. Here's a picture of the container store that we all know and love over there on 104th, and essentially, we're just picking this up and moving it over to the new location. All right. So, tonight, council has three options they can approve, with or without conditions or stipulations, deny their request for reasons that you would state, or table this for further consideration. With that, I'll open it up to any questions you guys have.
All right. Questions? All right. Go ahead, Becky.
Really? I even raised my hand. Did you see that?
Yes, you did. I saw that.
I just had a couple concerns or things that were brought to my attention. One is that light that's on Washington and Garland.
The traffic light or the--
The traffic light.
Okay.
Do we have any ability as a city to regulate the time on that, or is that all set through? And I apologize if I should know this.
No, absolutely. My understanding, David helped me out here, is that we actually, that we do have some control over that, but because it's part of the major arterial network, we have to run requests through a regional process, primarily through Dr. Cox, but we do have the ability to, to modify that if necessary.
I would definitely like to see us look into that, because right now, I believe that it's between a four and a six-minute wait. And if, if there are so many people going to be going into that Starbucks, I really do think that we need to look at that and see what we can do to improve that.
Absolutely. And I, and I think that's one of the things, as we move forward, is, you know, looking at signal progression and having these things updated. And hopefully, as we start getting more into like the bike-ped, match-up plan implementation, as well as some of the things that Public Works is working on, that we're, one of the things that we're, we're coming back to here is the, is the traffic calming measures. This is part of the bigger conversation about how do we provide better multimodal and existing transportation services.
Go ahead, Becky.
Sorry, I got three. I know that Eric, I think he's hiding somewhere, I, we, I talked to him at the last planning commission meeting, because it seemed to me that Walmart was also using that parking lot to park their semis. So, were you able to find anything out on that? Sorry, Eric, I'm putting my work on the spot.
I did go out to the side a couple times and didn't see anything out there. I know you indicated that they were using even that lot.
Yeah.
But the two times I went out there to post signs and take pictures, I didn't see anything out there.
Nothing. Okay. I just want to make sure that they're not going to, you know, I've been out of town for the last, like, almost a week and a half. I just want to make sure Walmart's not going to continue to park semis there once the Starbucks get there, you know? I'm sorry, that is my last one for right now.
I've got a question as far as the stoplight. Are you referring east and west or north and south? Because, I mean, I travel that all the time, and I've never experienced a four-to-six-minute wait.
You, I can sit out there after coming out of Walmart?
I mean, so, so it's east-west?
It's east-west, not north and south. North and south, nice and great.
So, depending on the time of day, the, the signal timing is, is designed to address the peak-flow demand, which typically is north-south on Washington. So, what happens is that because that's a major arterial network, that signal is actually coordinated with many of the signals along that run. And so, when they have calculated what the peak-hour demand, sometimes what will happen is, is that the side streets, unless there's a call, will actually put, put into a longer hold pattern than you'd otherwise would want it to. And then, we can definitely look into that.
Okay. Marcy? Go ahead.
Are you sure? No, you go, you go. We talked also about the lighting around the building.
Sure.
And from what I understand, the lighting is going to be canister up and down only.
Yes.
And is that being confirmed, because the residents were a little worried about the extra lighting that it might cause. They felt that they had a lot of lighting off of the Walmart parking lot.
Sure. So, one of the challenges we have, which we're addressing in the, in the update to the zoning code, is that we don't require photometric plans, which is basically a lighting plan that shows how much light is being generated from the onsite lighting, and how much would otherwise leave or not leave the site. In talking with Starbucks after the testimony from the planning commission meeting, they actually did a photometric analysis for us. And I actually, because knowing that the comments that you have heard were post-public process on Walmart from, from, from residents across the street, I want to point out that they're proposing five lights. There'll be one here, 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 and then one right here on the building. Okay? Oh, excuse me, and one other right here. They're going to be safety lights. And I also, since we don't have an adoption standard for photometric light pollution leaving the property, most city standards are anywhere from two-foot candles up to five, sometimes 10-foot candles, based off the adjacency to residential properties. So, people go, "Well, that's great, Brooke. What is a foot candle, and how does that relate to, is that bright? Is it going to blind me?" So, from a building standpoint, when, when we do life-safety inspections, one of the things that we do for lighting is you have to maintain one foot candle in an emergency situation. And the best way that we used to, to implement that test is if you have a business card, and you can hold it this far away, until you can't read that card, that's about a foot candle of illumination. I'd also point out that when looking at the Walmart photometric and this, there's not more than a half or less of a foot candle at the property line, and then when you get into the traveled roadway, it's, it's a zero. Interestingly enough, when you look at Washington Street in general, there are, there are actually streetlights, and the distance between where Walmart is and where the adjacent property on the east side, it's almost 95 feet away. So, you can visually see the globes, even though they're downcast, you can see that light. But in terms of what outdoor lighting standards typically apply to, is whether it's flushing into someone's property and creating a nuisance based off of that. So, I think that's part of the context of, of what we're doing, but primarily, what they're proposing is, is, has no adverse effect off-site.
Okay. Thank you.
That was my, that's what I promised.
Marcy?
So, how many residents came to the public hearing for this one?
Actually, probably, yeah.
There was a husband in my car that came, that lived right across the street on Washington Street, Clarkson Court, I believe.
I had a purpose for asking that question. I'll ask, because I anticipate at our board meeting, we'll have this question. So, when you studied the traffic, did you study the traffic that was on, is on Garland and the impact that it'll have?
Yes.
And tell me a little bit about that.
So, under their traffic impact study, they looked at how much traffic they would capture off of Garland. And they, we, we actually had them go all the way to Grant on Garland, just to make sure that we had good traffic data. They're, the way that they, what we call mode split, in terms of where their traffic is coming from, it's, I believe it's about 15% is what they're figuring for traffic coming eastbound on Garland that they would capture. If you'd like, I can actually pull the actual number of vehicles per hour that they think that is. But it's not, it's not a sub--
Or have, send it to me for our board meeting.
Sure.
I anticipate that one. Not that it's a bad thing, because I, I don't think it is, but I know it's been a concern for the residents there on Garland with some of the other development things that have happened there.
Absolutely. And I think that, you know, once, one of my, one of my early prefacing statements about a type of use like this, is how they actually are capturing existing traffic volume, as opposed to creating new traffic volume. When you think of residential development, you're generating new traffic. Okay? For, for a retail use like this, it's, I mean, there may be a new destination traffic that's created, but the question is, how much of that is existing background traffic already? And is it just background traffic that's just pulling over, or is it a new traffic trip that someone who never drove down Washington or Garland before would take?
And I think the, the thing about the Garland study that myself and some of the residents over there have felt is that the busier that Huron and Washington get, and the more that people realize Grant is an option, the more they take Garland. So, the increase of the traffic that we see is, is definitely there. But I get it, and I think this Starbucks is going to be busier than you think, because there's not a Starbucks on the east side, so--
I hear you. I hear you. If I may, just very quickly, I'd also point out that when, one of the things that we are looking at with the bike ped, is how do we do road diets and still maintain level of service? And Garland's on, is on the radar for that as well, for that, for those very reasons.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any, Kyle?
Thank you, Mayor. And just to kind of piggyback off what Marcy was saying, we obviously have the Quanys Bath House and Splash Pad coming up tonight as well, which I would imagine in the summertime is going to significantly increase traffic along Garland. And so, I would like to see the numbers as well, and then I don't know if that's on the radar as well, because I believe that they're going to be right across the street from each other, so that's going to...
So, one thing we know right now is that Garland operates at a level of service A/B, which is as good as it gets, almost. And we don't see long-term, in terms of future growth and trip generation, from not just the site, but also the surrounding area, that we don't see a large degradation of traffic for Garland, in terms of level of service and quality. And once again, signal timing progression could also help affect that as well, so that you don't have four- to six-minute hold times. So that's another component that we can also integrate into that.
Thank you.
All right, any, Kim?
So, Brooke, I just want to make sure I understood correctly, the only way to get to the Starbucks and through their drive-through is going to be through Walmart?
No. There's two entrances.
Okay.
One's off of Washington, right here. It's about 100 feet north of the intersection. And then, people will either turn left, or come from Garland to enter approximately right about here. So, the mode split for the traffic study shows it about a 50/50. 50% will come from here, and this is largely right in, trip movement here.
Right, but that's not directly into their drive-through. They have to come down in the drive-through as the, almost the loop.
They'll come through here, right, so they'll come down, they'll come in, and then they'll come down and turn south, and then enter into the queue, right here.
So that looks problematic to me, because people are going to be trying to come out of that drive-through while people are trying to come in, and that looks a little...
Sure. So the driveline here is wide enough for two vehicles, so that if there is a queue coming, let's just say, for the hypothetical, there's a queue here and a queue here, this person exiting should be able to make a free movement and turn, and turn out of the drive-through and go this direction. If this person is trying to go this way, that could create an internal traffic conflict.
Okay. And then my second question is, can you please clarify, just confirm the address for me, because your memo has 1701 Washington Street, and 10701 Washington Street, and then the economic development update had KFC as 10701 Washington Street. So I just want to verify that it's really 10701.
I believe that it is 10701.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Questions? All right, thank you.
And also the applicant and their staff, and your answer to questions you have as well.
Thank you. Is there anyone here? Does the applicant wish to testify? Or anyone else here wish to testify at this time? If you do, I'd like to get you sworn in, first of all, so. Is there anyone else besides the applicant that wants to testify? All right, Joanna?
If you'll raise your right hand, please. Do you swear under the penalty of perjury that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Mayor, council, thank you for having us. Briefly, your planning staff does an awesome job taking care of us, helping us understand the issues, things like that. I have nothing further to add to the situation unless there's questions. I do have consultants that can answer.
Kyle?
Just out of curiosity, I know that Brooke had said that you're just lifting it up and placing it on the new site. How are you going to transfer it over there? Is it going to be via truck, or...
Yes, it would be probably a lowboy truck, yes.
Okay. Can we look at documenting that for the city? I think that's kind of unique and interesting. I'd like to see, I'm sure our residents would be interested to see how that's done.
Is it like a media event, or something?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think like, yeah, if we want to video it or something.
Put it on Facebook, or...
Yeah. I find that kind of interesting.
Put it on our website.
Cool.
I actually think we did something similar to when they actually put it in.
Any other questions or comments? No? All right, well, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak either for or against this application? All right. I will then close the public hearing, and we will move to ordinance, the second reading, which the first one is CB 1894.
A bill for an ordinance repealing and reenacting Article III to Chapter 10 of the Northland Municipal Code to adopt by reference the 2017 National Electrical Code with Amendments.
Move to approve.
David?
Yes, council, this is a move to get current on the 2017 National Code by state statute, and staff recommends approval.
Thank you. Discussion? Hearing done, please open the vote.
Vote is open.
Please vote.
A close-out vote, and CB 1894 on second reading passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next is CB 1895.
A bill for a special ordinance rezoning from C4 conditional commercial to planned unit development, certain real property in the City of Northland, located at 10701 Washington Street in the County of Adams, State of Colorado, and amending the zoning map of the City of Northland.
Move to approve.
David?
This is zoning amendment to move Starbucks from its current location, 104th Avenue, to the current Garland site.
Thank you. Discussion? Comments? Yes.
I just would like to thank the owners for keeping the business in Northland. We really appreciate it, and I think it's a great spot for it. I welcome it on that side of the city, so thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, please open the vote.
Vote is open.
Please vote.
A close-out vote, and CB 1895 on second reading passes unanimously.
Okay, next is resolutions. The first one is CR 87.
A resolution approving a professional services agreement between the City of Northland and DHM Design Corporation for the Kiwanis Bath House replacement and Splash Pad project.
Move to approve.
Second? David?
Mayor, council, three settlements were received in response to the request for proposal issued for the design improvements at Kiwanis Park. The proposals range from $124,884 to $216,510. All three proposals were reviewed by staff, and two of the three proposals were within the anticipated project budget. The highest scoring proposal was received by DHM Design Corporation, and DHM was also the low bidder at $124,884. Funds for the design and the construction of this project are allocated in 2017 project budget, which include $500,000 from Adams County, open space discretionary funds, $300,000 for Conservation Trust Fund, and $800,000 in grant awarded from Adams County Open Space. And staff recommends approval to DHM for this design work.
Thank you. Discussion? Yes, Carol?
I looked up DHM and their website, and it was wonderful, so I think it's great that they actually came in as a low bidder, because their projects were really beautiful. I like the natural aesthetic that they use, and I didn't remember that they did croak reservoir, so that was kind of fun to read that. But the website was really nice, and I would hope that they're going to do a great job, so. That's it.
All right, any other discussion? Comments? Okay, please open the vote.
The vote is open.
Please vote.
A close-out vote, and CR 87 passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next is CR 88.
A resolution adopting the 2017 revised Parks and Recreation Master Plan.
Second? David?
Yes, Mayor, and council, attached to your memorandum, you'll find a resolution, if approved, would adopt the 2017 revisions to the City of Northland's Park and Recreation Master Plan. The proposed plan complies with the obligations of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board as described in Section 17-2-7 of the Municipal Code. The 2017 operating budget and CIT budget for Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Services Department includes adequate funds for the implementation of the sections of the plan proposed in this year's action. And staff, a recommendation to adopt the document was approved unanimously by the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board on August 10th of this year, and staff recommends approval of the proposed resolution.
Thank you.
Amanda Peterson is here, if you have any specific questions.
Thank you. Discussion?
I just wanted to say that the document was really helpful, just to give a little refresher of some of the locations, because there were a couple of parks that I kind of forgot about. So it was, it was nice to get a little refresher on that, so appreciate the detail.
Anyone else? All right, thank you. Please open the vote.
Vote is open.
Please vote.
A close-out vote, and CR 88 passes unanimously.
Next is CR 89.
A resolution approving the 2018 Parks and Recreation User Fee Schedule. Move to approve.
Second?
David?
I hear city council will be considering to adopt the City of Northland's Park and Recreational and Cultural Services 2018 user fee schedule. The fees herein that have been proposed in the attached user fee schedule are developed based upon the user fee guidelines that have been adopted by the Park and Recreation Advisory Board. The Parks and Recreation Advisory Board reviewed the fees proposal and unanimously approved the proposal fee schedule in their regular meeting, again, on August 10th of this year, and staff recommends approval of the attached proposal fee schedule.
Thank you. Discussion? Questions? Please open the vote.
The vote is open.
Please vote.
A close-out vote, and CR 89 passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Can we take 90, 91, 92, and 93 as one?
That's what I was just going to ask.
If nobody has any objections or any discussion on them.
I would object.
Okay, then never mind.
Sorry.
Forget I said it.
All right, let's go to the first one, CR 90.
A resolution submitting a ballot question regarding the extension of the existing 4.000 mill levy to the electors of the City of Northland at the November 7, 2017, regular municipal election, and setting the ballot titled thereof.
Move to approve.
David?
Yeah, Mayor, council, Mr. Hoffman will elaborate on these series of ballot questions.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. This first proposed ballot question would set for the November election, the extension of the four-mill property tax. It is not a new tax, it is the extension of the existing tax. The difference fundamentally between this extension and the previous taxes, this ballot question would actually have a question that eliminates the sunset provision as well, so it would continue it without a sunset, to allow it to be financed against, for example, and to allow the city to do more long-term projects.
Thank you. Discussion? Hearing done, please open the vote.
The vote is open. A close-out vote, and CR 90 passes unanimously.
Next is CR 91.
A resolution submitting a ballot question regarding amendment of the city's Home Rule Charter to the electors of the City of Northland at the November 7, 2017, regular municipal election, to amend Article V of the Charter and setting the ballot titled thereof.
Move to approve.
Second? David? Oh, I mean, Corey, I'm sorry.
Madam Mayor, members of council, the next three proposed ballot questions are all charter amendments. The proposed amendment to Article V would do a couple of things, but I think most importantly, it would create certainty to the initiative process if the voters choose to approve this question, if it's put on the ballot. Currently, there's an ambiguity in Northland's Charter, in which signatures, someone can circulate an initiative petition without a deadline. That's different from state law. This would create a 180-day timeframe, which creates certainty and is consistent with state law.
Thank you. Discussion? Please open the vote.
Vote is open.
Please vote.
A close-out vote, and CR 91 passes unanimously.
All right, CR 92.
A resolution submitting a ballot question regarding amendment of the city's Home Rule Charter to the electors of the City of Northland at the November 7, 2017, regular municipal election, to delete Section 8.17 and setting the ballot titled thereof.
Move to approve.
David? I mean, Corey, why, I'm just so automatically...
Madam Mayor, members of council, this ballot question would put on the ballot for the November election, the question of whether to delete Section 8.17 from the city's Home Rule Charter. The reason for that is that currently, this accounting policy is set in the Charter. This does not preclude the city council from doing much of what Section 8.17 does by Charter by ordinance in the future. Currently, if, if Section 8.17 were removed, it would allow for more transparency when tracking spending, and would also be consistent with state law regarding the function of a water activity enterprise.
Thank you. Discussion? Hearing done, please open the vote.
The vote is open.
Please vote.
A close-out vote, and CR 92 passes with one no vote cast by councilmember Snessinger.
Thank you. Next, CR 93.
A resolution submitting a ballot question regarding amendment of the city's Home Rule Charter to the electors of the City of Northland at the November 7, 2017, regular municipal election, to delete Article 13, eliminating the Citizens Affairs Board from the Charter and setting the ballot titled thereof.
Move to approve.
Corey.
Madam Mayor, members of council, this last proposed charter amendment would ask the voters whether to repeal Article 13 of the city charter, eliminating the Citizens Affairs Board. This has been in the Charter since it was originally adopted in 1975, and was done to hear complaints and proposals from citizens regarding the city and its government. The thought is that the Charter limits the Board's function today. Things are much different in terms of how you can communicate with the government in 2017, as compared to 1975, when the Charter was adopted. And so, this question would allow the voters to consider whether to eliminate the Citizens Affairs Board. Once again, the council could certainly be free to create some sort of Board in commission, even if Article 13 were deleted, that had much the same functions, it would no longer be in the Charter.
Thank you. Discussion? Hearing done, please open the vote.
Vote is open.
Please vote.
A close-out vote, and CR 93 passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next, we move to discussion items. David, Ralston House design update.
Yeah, some good news here. First of all, going the grant applications, I don't have anything new to report in that particular section. Site preparations, council awarded the generator relocation, that is the major step to clearing the site, to be able to build the building. And I think best of all, we got our, basically our engineers' estimate of probable cost back at about $1.8 million. That results in about an 8% increase, and I'd have to say, from two years, and at 30% design, that's a pretty, pretty good figure. So, as soon as Jim gets back, we're going to go ahead and try to work with other jurisdictions to get the IGA amended, so that I can get this, get this project on the street and bid, and then start, start work as soon as possible.
Great. Okay. Comments? Questions? Right? And then you have one more? Justice Center?
Justice Center. Well, you can see, it's going pretty quick right now. I should probably knock on wood, this is the project I've gone quite, quite the longest without having some sort of issue crop up that needs quite a bit of attention, so we're really good in that, that aspect. In spite of what you've heard about the building, it's a pretty easy building to build. Right now, I go over the contingency updates for both owner and contractor, and there have been no changes the last month. A couple of things I do want to mention, they are on schedule. I'd like to propose to come back to council here, I think, sometime in September. FCI has been working very hard. We have one major component that we haven't bid out yet, and that's the road improvements and the traffic signal. FCI has given me an estimate to, would fall into the same characteristics as a GMP, and I would propose to council, we do that by a change order, and the price would have been, is $435,000, and I originally estimated $500,000, so we picked up $65,000 right there. Jim May is away today, but he wanted me to, to say, we are hopeful to have a topping-out ceremony, and right now, it's tentatively scheduled for the first week in October. And what that would consist of, basically, is we're suggesting a small group, maybe council, some, some people there, because essentially, you'd be invited into an unfinished building, where you'd basically sign a piece of steel. Typically, it's the last steel that goes into the superstructure, but it, it'll be a great opportunity to see a big building that's got a steel frame, and it's, from this point on, it'll be a lot of activity, because now, it's all the subs come in with the facades, and all the interior petitioning and things like that, so it'll get quite busy. So, we're, we're very proud of that, and hopefully, that, that date in Oc, Octo, October will work. And right now, I think it's tentatively, again, I just stressed tentatively, because there's a lot of things to work out. It'll be, I think, Thursday, October 5th, I believe, and it'd be later in the afternoon, so everybody could attend, 5 o'clock in that, in that, in that range. Yeah, and then lastly, Hafer Wasaki will be here this week to work with, with Mr. May and myself on FFNE furnitures, fixtures, and equipment for the building. That's also a component of the bid price, that we had $600,000, and Jim and I are very anxious to get that out on the street, and, and get a furniture manufacturer on, on, on the docket, getting, get prices for that for, we're hopeful next fall's stocking of the building. the building. So quite a lot on that one, and it's all good news, I'm happy to say, tonight.
Great. Any questions? Done? All right then. Thank you. Can I just say-
Yes, you may. No, I just want to thank everybody for all the great pictures and, you know, watching the live cam and stuff. I know that Carol posted some. It's phenomenal. I love watching it. I love watching the changes and things, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I'll go over the building more detail when I show, when we show it to council in October.
Oh, you know, I have tons of questions.
I snuck on the site one day, on a Saturday, when it was open, you know, but I just had to go in and look, so took a few pictures. And I was amazed, it looked really great.
They had pictures of you walking in there.
Do they? It's okay. I would have had a hard hat on, but I didn't see any to grab, so I just took photos and laughed. It was good.
Okay. Anything else? All right, so next we have communications, and Antonio will start with you.
I'm good, Mayor. Thank you.
Marcy?
I have a couple of things. I wanted to just mention that North Metro Fire Rescue sent some teams down to Texas to help out with the hurricane and flooding. And I think it's just a testament to the training that they offer to their teams. They send them to fires when they need to be called out, and they provide rescue services. So I think it's just a great testament to the folks they have over there at the fire district. I also wanted to mention that Anithine Libraries has been going through their strategic plan. I've been able to be involved in part of some of their data that they've been sharing. And I think it's really interesting to hear some of the things that the community has been expressing to them, that they want to see, whether it's within the community or at Anithine Library in particular. And a lot of the things that they've been talking about are the very things that we're discussing about the rec center. And those very meetings have been held with residents that are here in the Northland and the Thornton area, and that is to see a greater emphasis on cultural activities. Theater space was one that came up numerous times, and more recreation. So those are things that we are talking about, and it's just great to see that feedback. And I don't know how they're doing it, but they are definitely packing all of their roundtable events with community members. So great to see. And then lastly, a little bit more on the personal side, and I wish the chief was here for this, but I didn't think I was going to cry. I just wanted to say thank you to the PD who helped with one of our senior residents in the last two weeks. And this person is very special to me. And our PD pulled together to get her the support that she needed. So, thank you.
Thank you, Marcy. Okay. Thank you.
I just want to wish Rosie Gardner a happy belated birthday. That's all I have today.
All right then. Okay. Carol?
I would like to tell everybody that the rec center is closed from today, yes, August 28th to September 4th, for annual maintenance and cleaning, so don't go there, because it won't be open. The Kiwanis Pool is having their Dog Days of Summer, Monday, September 4th, which is just a really cool event that they have every year. Your dogs can go and swim, they have to show proof of vaccination. I wish I could take my dogs, but my dogs hate other dogs, so never happens. But I would love to attend one year when I get a dog that's friendly.
You're going to adopt one.
Seriously, I know. I just pick ones that don't like dogs. I don't know what that is. I did want to announce a new concert series that the Northland Arts will be putting on starting September 22nd. It is called the Coffee House Series, Coffee House Concert Series. And the first one, so it's kind of a little bit more mellow music. First one is Espresso Swing. They do American swing and gypsy jazz. And so it's just a little more laid back, if you'd like to go to that concert, September 22nd, 7:30 in the theater. And they are also having a free concert, which is great. It is the Denver Municipal Band, October 6th. They are going to be in tandem with the Northland High School Choir, and it is a patriotic